Please, will everyone join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Glad to be back for another week after the holiday. I hope everybody had a good weekend, long weekend. The sun's out, head rain for there too. Better be careful of jinxes, they'll come back. But we are meeting in regular session here this afternoon. Let's begin by approving the minutes of the May 19, 2024 meeting. You have a motion, please?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Smith, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
All yes vote on the approval of the minutes. Mr. Minkif, see, I don't read the pink sheet, just I'm assuming nobody signed in to speak.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure so.
Are we outside?
Sure.
I'm sure Kingdom was brought in, had there been somebody to sign in to speak before tonight or this afternoon.
No one signed in.
No one signed in to speak, so we don't have any public comments today. Okay, on the presentation section, we do have a presentation that's on here. Ray Ellis, our Finance Director and Treasurer, is going to give us a 2021 budget. Mr. Ellis?
Okay, I gave you each one of these two sheets, little cover sheet, and then a synopsis of the budget on the second page, kind of break down to the highlights of what I wanted you to look at. Every year I've done this budget, it's always been a different process. The first year, I couldn't get it balanced because we didn't have enough money. The second year, I had, I think, just enough, maybe 167,000 extra. Last year, the state wanted me to put $2 million carryover in, and I used a little bit of that, but I didn't have to cut any expenses at the same time. So, given what we saw when we did personnel season, what we thought the state aid was going to be, it's really close to that with the final numbers. And I've had several conversations with Mr. Minkif. I said, I think we're just, I'm gonna have to cut a lot of stuff in Fund 11 and just the general budget. When I got into it, that wasn't the case. In fact, I had too much money again. It's almost easier when you don't have enough money to do these budgets, because now I had a dilemma of what to do with the extra money. The extra money, in my opinion, when they did House Bill 206 last year, they gave us about $600,000 extra in revenue. That was just added to state aid and it was extra money. That is what this money is, I'm pretty sure, because I didn't cut any of the expenses in Fund 11. I didn't have to cut any. So, based off last year's budget that I worked off of into this year, that extra money is what we're looking at. But I didn't carry over as much money. Last year, they wanted me to carry over 2 million. I had a talk with Amy Willard and your eye Cummings, and we agreed on a million. And then I went back to them. I said, well, maybe I want a million and a half. But when it came down to it, I just used a million, and then I had extra money, 766,000. So, reserve contingency is 1.766 million, which is roughly 5% of the general fund. So, we're hitting right in that number that the State Department wants you to be at. Now, I've had this conversation with Mr. Minkif just this morning. We were worried about that number, but what is going to happen, in my opinion, and nobody from the State Department has told me this, what I think is going to happen is, it didn't happen last year because they gave us the extra money in House Bill 206, but in years past, they always ask for a reduction in state aid in December and January. If you think about what's happened with COVID-19 and the revenue the state's lost, and I'm sure that they've lost just a ton, my guess is 1%, 2%, 3% state aid formula be cut. And again, nobody said that at the State Department. It's just an educated guess based, I've been doing this for 14 years, you know, in some capacity, and I've seen it happen, I think, maybe four times where they've had that cut. And I just can't see where they wouldn't do that this year. So, instead of going back, in all the years where I've been doing the budget, every year I had to cut transportation, I had to cut maintenance and things like that, because I just didn't quite have enough. I could have added that money back into transportation and back into maintenance, and we wouldn't have had the contingency as high as what we've had. I would have put money back that I took out over the years. If the state asks for the money back, what I'm going to do, I'm just going to be able to take it out of the contingency. It won't affect the expenses at all. It won't affect anything. And that was just something I think would be in the best interest of the board, just to keep that there, don't show it. I don't want it to look like it's really a cut, whatever it cuts down the pipe, because we stored that money, we put it back. I think that would be the safest thing to do. So, that was the first thing I wanted you to know. The total revenue is 36,350,000. It's up a couple hundred thousand, almost 200,000 from last year. The regular levy expense is 2.752 million, which we saw from our approved levy rates. The excess levy is above what the voters voted on a year and a half ago, about, what, November 18, I think. It's up, I think, $36,000 above that. So, I didn't have to cut any of the levy expenses for the first time in, well, first time I ever done a budget, I didn't have to make that cut. So, again, Mr. Minkif and I had a conversation. I said, what I want to do is just put it back into maintenance. So, I just added $36,000 into maintenance from the excess levy. It just seemed like the easiest way to put that money in there instead of raising something else. I can move it to major improvements or whatever, you know, later on if I want it. It was not a big deal.
But that is one of the items of the excess levy.
Yes, that's $36,000 in that excess levy that was over and above.
Well, I'm saying in the excess levy itself, one of the items that's called for are just general money.
Yes. That's the one that's not separated into its own project. It's just put in, there's a little over a million that goes into salaries. That's not in a project. It just goes straight into Fund 11, maintenance, transportation. So, yes, it is.
Thank you, Mr. Minkif.
I'm trying to help you out.
So, House Bill 206 changed a lot in the way we do the budgets. Normally, we had Step 7, A, B, and C, and then bus purchases were always pulled out of the state aid formula and put in Fund 61. Now, those are included in Fund 11, and I've made a note of that down here. What that did was help, it makes Fund 11 looks like there's more revenue than what there actually is, because we had to move money out of Fund 11 into a project in Fund 11. So, there was, I don't know, close to a million and a half dollars of extra revenue there. Kind of throws the numbers off whenever you look at it from one year to the next. But whenever we did the budgets last year in October, I believe it was, for House Bill 206, Jeff and I had a conversation, and we agreed to, instead of just putting all the money from Step 7 into Fund 11 to make it look like your carryover was really, really big, we put it into projects, so every year we can track it, just like it was in Fund 61 with restrictions on it. So, now this will be pulled out. It won't look like carryover, you know, we'll know that that's for those particular projects. Going into Fund 61, it's really similar to last year. Title 1, Dawn said was going to get cut probably about 200,000. So, I just made it a nice round, 1.5 million for Title 1. When you look through the detail of all but maybe one project, I had the salaries and then anything left over and above going in that made up that revenue amount, I put into a contingency or a reserve for that fund. So, nothing really changed in Fund 61. Number of employees that we're accounting for in the budgets dropped by nine. The way that's done is, Joanne puts information in HMS, and we pull it into EMS. There may be a few people in here that's supposed to be coded to a project that we don't have the money for yet. I couldn't find that instance, but it's always a possibility, which won't affect our general fund at all. So, but again, the main thing is, we have 766,000 above what I thought we would have. So, we're right at the 5% reserve contingency that state wants. I think they said 0.36 is what they want. So, we're at that point. But all this being said, and all this looks great, I don't foresee the tax revenue being as good as what we were told, simply because we're down 300 to 500,000 just in the county portion of tax collections. And that's been a trend every single year. We've never made it to where we were supposed to be with the tax collections. And I foresee next year it'll probably be worse, simply because of what's happened. And I think the state aid form, I think that's going to get a major overhaul, because the state's lost all kinds of revenue with just taxes. So, I don't foresee, this budget is just a budget on paper. I don't think it's going to be anything close to actual. I just, I don't see all that magnitude in the end. I would think that the state would give us a cut come January. But that's just me. Bus money, 376,000, part of the state aid formula. So, we've had conversations with Transportation about what to do with the buses and what, you know, what we're planning on doing. So, I think normally, that, since I've been here, that number's been as high as 399,000. And that may be right at what the lowest number I've seen, 376, 375. So, you gotta assume that they'll probably have that every year, somewhere in that neighborhood. So, we don't do leases, you know, we've got 376 to play with every year and anything we've got left over. But that's kind of the highlight of the budget. And it was a different beast this year. Every time I get into this thing, it's always different. Every year presents different problems. And I was really worried that maybe I missed something, because I had that left over. Until I started thinking that we had 591,000 extra that they just threw into Fund 11 last year with House Bill 206. And I thought, well, that's where that money is. And I only held out a million in the carryover, because, like I've said, I don't think our carryover is going to be what it was last year. So, you know, just simply because our tax collections are down. And sometimes, whenever they start bad, they end up getting better, you know. And I always looked year to year to year to year. And I go back, I think, six years from what Birdy had and what I've had. And this year, it's gotten worse. I think we were down maybe 70,000 on last month's collections over what we were last year. And last year was down from the year before. So, I, we're not going to get anywhere close to our budgeted number from excess levy and regular levy this year. So, again, I always urge caution with what you do go forward, just because no matter how rough you, and Greg, it might look on tape, I don't think that's actually a reality.
Let me ask this, then.
Okay.
If we have, and I do believe we have a good basis to think that we're not going to get, let's say, the, you know, regular expense levy is budgeted at, and the excess levy is budgeted at, if we have a better idea of what these numbers are actually going to be coming through the door, why are we not using those numbers? Why are we using budgeted numbers? I mean, you're telling us, you're telling us that this is inflated based on someone's budgeted number.
Well, what that is, is that the Assessor's Office says, this is the collections that we should have based on property values in Lincoln County. But how well that's actually paid, I mean, that's just what they collect. They don't know what they're going to collect. The Sheriff's Office don't know. But none of the years I've been here, now, in Logan, I think we always made that. I think that we had a levy, and then we would have more money. In Lincoln County, it doesn't work that way. And I could be wrong about Logan, but it seems like we had excess of our excess.
I mean, are we required by law?
Required by law to use those levy rates, is to the best of my knowledge. Now, we can manipulate that by reducing or actually by raising the uncollected portion of that. Maybe we can do that next year. But I've talked to Amy Willard about that. I've talked to the Sheriff's Department and maybe the Assessor about that, what to use as far as when you're doing, and then we have to do that in March, whenever we do the levy calculations. Whenever y'all approve them, you have to approve the uncollected amount. I think I have it at 4%. And we could raise that. And that's one of the things they did in Boone County, wasn't using that number right. But whenever I started here, everybody had a concern, because Boone County, a problem had just happened. So, I got ahold of the Finance Department, and I talked to the county people. I said, what number do I need to use? And they all agreed, I think my number is 4%. It's in the first section, probably page three or four. Yeah, less allowance for uncollectibles, exonerations, and delinquencies, 4%. Maybe that needs to be 6% or 7% going forward. And that may not even make a big difference, because, you know, maybe we hit that this year. We just don't know.
Well, really, you're just speculating here.
It's speculation based off of educated guess, finance, whatever.
I agree. I think this year, you know, it would surprise everyone if, you know, if met our, the expectations we've been told. But, you know, when the state sets those levy rates in March, then we have to follow through on that. And I'm assuming all that ties in there too. But I agree, I think I understand what Rowdy's saying. We don't want to be overly optimistic, and I think that's where we just need to be cautious.
Well, the one way we can manipulate that is in March next year, we'll just raise that uncollectible percentage up, and that would probably give us a better picture.
Well, we would just, because you never know how these things run up again. There may be, I don't know when, but a few days or two, when things start to rise again.
But right now, what you're doing is, you get a number from the Assessor or Sheriff's Office, what they think will be collecting. You apply the levy rate that's in the levy law.
Yep.
And that's what this number is, less the 4% that you've plugged in as uncollectible. So, what you're doing is technically correct, but realistically inaccurate.
Yeah. I do think that that's the case. And, you know, I stress and worry over this, and then somebody, it was one of the food service directors, it was, I'm not even going to mention his name, I was worried about the budget. And he said, Ray, it's just a guess. Don't stress over it. That's like, okay.
Even if you say, isn't that y'all comparing? And the answer to that is, well, it's wildly inaccurate.
Well, and that was food service, and it was really inaccurate, because, you know, like I said, our carryover last year, a lot of that had to do because we didn't have to send, transfer as much money from our general fund to food service. And I'm hoping that that's like that again this year, you know. It may be a saving grace. That Medicaid could be some of the reasons why we do have a carryover this year. Of course, I won't do that for a while. So, but it's, it's an educated guess, but by law, it has to be guessed. But that's pretty much it. If you got any questions from here to whatever.
Just to go back to this 5%, that's what the state recommends that you.
I think it's 3%.
3% to 5%.
3% to 5%.
Yeah.
So, we're in that range, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't even be, I didn't calculate it out, but I think we're just a little over the 5%.
But I mean, even then, if one, you know, if you do believe, you know, you have this excess, really, you're just where they think you should be anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't want to be like a 1% that have something unexpected come around, and then you've got a problem.
I think we'll have enough carryover to fit into the budget. It'd be nice. Maybe it'll even surpass the million. But that, that 766,000 over, you know, what I had in expenses, I think they're going to take some of that, so I think we'll be below the 5%. And nobody has said that to me, it's from the State Department. Nobody's.
I don't think anybody has to say it, you know, if you want to.
Yeah, I mean, you hear what the governor's saying, and think about all the business that's been lost from all those taxes. The state is, I think they're going to, I just think, and then whenever they come back into the session next year, they're probably going to make more cuts. And then, you know, the county's going to be asked to do more with less, you know. They may change the formula to where maybe they don't pay for certain, you know, they take some more teachers out of the formula. I don't know. So, only time will tell.
I agree. Okay, does anybody have anything else regarding the budget? Any questions or concerns? All right, Mr. Ellis, appreciate your work. You're almost done for another year, aren't you?
Yeah.
With the budget. Just that's the beginning. Okay, that's been the presentation. This is the administrative section, please. Can I have a motion to look at those items? Mr. Wilkinson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Minkif?
Okay, item A is the adoption of Lincoln County Board of Education 2020-2021 meeting schedule, which is attached. And item B, contract for Jeffrey Kelly, Superintendent for a three-year term beginning July 1, 2020.
Okay, anybody have any comment or concern about either one of those items? Okay, just on the meeting schedule for the coming year, Jeff and I got together and tried to, you know, because this will be something, obviously, we have to begin after July. And as I think everybody knows, the first meeting of July after a biannual election must be on a Monday, the first Monday of July after a biannual election. So, even though we typically meet on Tuesday, July the 6th is a Monday, and that's by, all 55 counties will be meeting that day. So, we set it up from that point on. The rest of it is pretty, what we've done from one year to the next, tried to be fairly consistent. We tried to include in there LSIC meetings and where they may be, you know, we're speculating, will, will there be LSIC meetings? We're, I mean, on all kinds of ifs here, but we just tried to build off what we've done in the past here, showing various required legal dates that like Mr. Ellis has to follow, and we have to follow, and placing those things in here. Include the superintendent evaluation requirements, the dates on those. As you know, we have to do those goals before September 15th. They are each year. We have to complete that by June the 30th. And matter of fact, here in the week, we're going to have to do Mr. Minkif's evaluation for this year. We'll finalize that process. But we just tried to put, you know, build on what's been done in the past here, looking at when dates are and all. We allowed a little time there at Thanksgiving, because we normally, we've gone off our schedule, maybe jumped a meeting if we didn't think was necessary. If we got to that point, there was something going on that really required our attention, we, you know, we can always have a special meeting to meet it. But this is just kind of based on past, you know, what we've done before. Okay. Mr. Kelly's contract is attached. Everyone has seen it. Mr. Kelly is with us this afternoon. He has seen the proposed contract, and so now it's time for us to act on that. So, at this point, I'll call for a motion on the two administrative items. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Just all yes vote on those items. What I'd like to do now, just take a moment, and Mr. Kelly and I have to sign this contract. So, what I'd like to do is for us to do that. Mr. Kelly, if you would come up, please, to the front here.
I'm going to sign it sitting down about 10 minutes.
So.
Do you have your? I'll have mine by here. Thank you, sir.
And then, when you finish, Mr. Kelly, if you'd like to make some remarks, you're certainly free to do so. What we'll do is, after you sign this, then Mr. Minkif will have some copies made for us.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
I'm just guessing, there's been no edits.
We didn't revise any.
Edits to that.
I was thinking, I was hoping maybe you wouldn't see that.
You know, as far as comments go, you know, somebody asked me if I ever thought I'd end up in this situation, and I think back, and the answer is no. But at the time, it felt like a wonderful opportunity and the right opportunity for me to pursue. And I, number one, thank you all for, I would say, giving me the opportunity to subsequently, you know, investing your trust in me or anything. And people keep saying, or asking me if I'm excited, and I don't know if that's the word. I think, I think the word that keeps popping in my head is that I'm eager. Of course, I might talk to Jeff, and he might, he might give me a little different perspective. I know there's a lot of responsibilities that come with the position, but I am eager to work. Hopefully, I can come down here and be successful for all of you all and certain people of Lincoln County. So, I guess to that degree, I am excited. So, looking forward to it. I'm sure July 1 will be here a lot quicker than I thought. So, minus that, I'll shut up and sit down unless y'all have any questions or comments.
Just like to congratulate you, and thank you for applying and for accepting this as a business responsibility.
Sure.
And, you know, we have trust, and we've gone through a lengthy process here to bring us to today. So, I must thank you myself, and I'm sure for all of you, we wish you well, because that means we wish ourselves well.
Sure. Well, I appreciate that. You want this back, or?
Yes, Jeff.
We'll just get the call back.
Then he'll make for a copy.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Okay, let's move to the finance section then, please. Can I have a motion to look at those items? Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wilkinson? Mr. Ellis?
A, schedule of invoices totaling $197,476.49. That list is attached. You got any questions? Let me know.
B, county pension for the fallen retired employees paid for excess levy.
And we need to make a revision there. Those girls got a hold of me. They, yes, we counted incorrectly. So, we've got a couple of changes here. For Beth Pritchard, it should be 34 years of experience. That is $39.17 per month. 39, 17. And Brenda Zimmerman is 39 years, about $41.25. 41, 25.
41, 25.
Employees have elected to receive the dental vision benefits. C, adoption of the Lincoln County Street proposed budget and levy estimate for fiscal years 2021.
Now, I see in parentheses there, Mr. Ellis, it says, proposed budget available for public inspection at county office. How long will it be available for inspection?
Actually, it's available, but it'll be up in my office for really the rest of the year.
Well, that language has had me a little bit confused, because, you know, because we're really approving the budget today, aren't we?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, so, what you're, this really means is that we're just, the budget's available for anybody to see after it's been approved.
Yeah, or, yeah, before too. I mean, there's even that period of time before where if somebody has a question, they come in and look at it.
Right.
So, yeah, it'll be available. It's up on the wall.
Okay, well, just that, what was in parentheses had me a little bit confused. Okay, everyone's seen or heard the revisions that Mr. Minkif's provided for us. There's our budget. Just for Mr. Kelly's benefit, on item B there, our retired employees, Lincoln County is unique in that, as a part of our excess levy, we provide a pension, a very moderate pension, as Mr. Wilkinson would concur, to our retirees. In addition to, you know, your state retirement when you retire, Lincoln County provides some. And you can see, you've got teachers here that taught for 40 years and they're getting $40. So, it's, it is what it is. But what we have seen for the past several years ago, and I don't remember the exact number, four or five years ago or more, we made in our levy, which permitted any retirees that wanted to, could participate in the benefit of the dental optical plan that the board has for all employees. So, everybody who is employed by the Board of Education has a dental optical plan. And what the board chose to do in that excess levy was to permit retirees, if they so choose, to also participate in that and forego the check that they would get. So, you're, we're seeing, you know, I don't know what the rate is, but I expect it's 90% or more, that they choose the dental optical. that they choose the dental optical over the check. So when you think about it, to get a dental optical plan for forty dollars a month is a pretty good deal. Last, two weeks, whatever our last forty months, this gentleman here, he decided to take dental optical. It really shocked me. He gave up his thirty-eight dollars and he's going to take dental optical. But that is something that, once again, we've had for many years as far as a retiree benefits for our employees. It's not much, but it's something. But having the dental optical provision option there for the, for those people, and, you know, Mr. Wilkinson and I, we, and we put ourselves in that group, it's something that, you know, really makes a big deal because we shared that with others, people from other counties that come in here for various meetings. You know, they just can't believe that, you know, here we're providing that to our retirees a dental optical plan. All right, that being said, it's time for us to vote. As far as the finance items, we have three items here. Is that an all yes vote on those?
Yes.
Okay, first and now, motion, please?
I'll vote.
Mr. Curry? Ms. Smith, did you second that?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, second that. Mr. Mickel?
I'll take that. Mr. King's not with us today. He's out delivering meals. Our meal delivery came in late.
They ate meal there, yeah.
And I had to press him into action. So he's helping deliver meals this afternoon. Item A, employment of short, long-term substitute professional personnel. Item B, transfer of professional personnel. Item C, employment of substitute service personnel. Item D is employment of service personnel. Item E, transfer of service personnel. And item F, leave of absence. And we have several more items.
To dip on this last, it has leave of absence, but what, however, in the effective date, it has the word resign.
He, he's not on leave of absence. He's resigning. That title should be different. I'll, I'll correct that.
Okay, so F should read?
Resignations and retirements.
Resignations and retirements, okay.
Good catch.
Everybody make that revision, please? So Mr. Neffler, he's resigning, okay. All right, are there any other questions or comments about personnel schedule? Not, is that an all yes vote on personnel?
Yes.
All yes vote. Okay, we're now down to a comment is concerned, board members, anybody have anything to say today? Mr. Mickel, do you have anything to say?
Just a couple of announcements. One, and I believe, Sean, Mr. Roy sent you something about the summer food?
Yeah.
Okay, so just so the board knows, next week will be the last time that we deliver meals out to all eight of our schools. We will transition into what is our normal summer feeding sites. So after taking a break the week of June the eighth, we will not be providing meals that week. And then the following week, June the fifteenth, we will start delivering meals to Duval, Lincoln County High School, West Hamlin, and Harts. In case you get questions.
And will those be for a five-day period?
Five, just like we're doing now, it'll be five, five meals, breakfast and lunch. Maybe a different vendor than what we're using now. We are working with some other counties to try to get a reduced rate on what we're paying for those meals. So through the cooperative.
Mr. Mickel, will the meals starting June eighth, is that available to the entire student population or is that just to needy students?
Just to needy students. We'd be scaled down. So we've been delivering two thousand meals a week. We'll scale that down to thirteen hundred meals a week. That's a good question. And again, we'll be relying on volunteers to help get those meals out there, which has worked very well for us. Except today was, there was a little bump in the road, but that's only because the meals were late getting here this morning. We were expecting them at nine and it wasn't after ten when the trucks arrived.
Well, when's that money supposed to go on the debit card?
Hmm, sometime in mid-June, so that'll be very soon. That'll happen mid to late June.
Did how, who delivered them today?
Uh, the National Guard brought them in, too, it's from Ripley.
That's waiting in last week's.
Now, the, the summer program, do you have to qualify?
All of us, since we're a community, elementary provisional county.
Okay.
All of our students are eligible.
Right.
However, we are, we only go to the neediest sites in the county per federal guidelines during the summer months.
But then, but no one's going to be turned away?
Right.
Right, okay.
Good question, too.
Okay.
I try to get John here sometimes. It seems like, you know, board meetings is, we won't deliver meals, so eventually we may work that in. We can get him here to.
So if there were, if there were students and they lived elsewhere, they didn't, they weren't really reduced, they still got to want to decide to get meals?
Yes.
Okay.
And if the numbers dictate, like, you know, we'll, we'll increase the number of meals that we're purchasing.
Okay, so I wouldn't, that's probably not too good.
The needs there, we'll make sure it's addressed.
And you anticipate all calls going out to announce a delivery schedule as they have been for the meal delivery over the last couple of months?
Yes, and Sean's been great to get that information out there too on social media, so thank you, Sean. But yes, we will.
Because in the years past, we've had cooks preparing this food. Whereas now, we're in the diversity of the delivery, timely delivery, et cetera.
And that waiver to be able to deliver meals in the fashion that we're doing that right now has been renewed. So it's, it's going to be up through August the thirtieth, thirty-first, that we'll be able to do this. So that's, that's a good thing. Not knowing what August is going to look like.
Even though school will have started.
Yeah, Mr. Kelly, you'll have a ball with that. I'm sure. Textbook adoption. Typically, this would be the meeting that we would adopt textbooks. But like many other activities, it's been postponed until the fall. So we have, we do have committees, it's been working to go through this process. But the reason why it's not before you is, it's, no date, no solid date when it's going to be due, when you'll need to vote on it. But this year is health, wellness, driver's education, and related arts. It's all a whole right now.
A textbook for driver's education?
Yeah.
Now, Jeff, are these going to be both in a textbook form and electronically?
Yes, just about every, every time you purchase textbook manuals.
They're available, they're close.
But I think I remember us discussing in a prior meeting, we're able to get high school level, the one-to-one that we're talking about, then we would buy just digital versions of the textbooks, right?
I had mentioned last week, yes. So we may be able with this CARES Act funding, Ray and I will have a chance to talk about this, drop all the way down to grades three, three to twelve. It's going to be an additional three hundred thousand dollars after the preliminary allocation last week. So we're hoping that we can.
Explain to me what you mean by one-to-one.
It's be a device, a laptop for every one of our students. We discussed it last.
I thought you were just talking about textbooks. So those laptops would be loaded or whatever you want to call it?
With textbooks, with programs that we're using in our, in our schools. We're already pretty loaded.
And that's why some of the school systems have a much easier time in terms of the academics during this being out of school because their kids have, even the ones that don't have internet access, have a device with textbooks, programs that they use in classroom and everything loaded on there.
Yeah.
So, so long as they're able, and pop in once a week to internet service, download your assignments for the week, and all the resources you need, your fingertips do your assignments.
I announced last week, AEP has given us funding to purchase the equipment to make all of our schools, all eight schools hotspots, Wi-Fi hotspots. So that, that funding, I think I'd given, Mr. Ellis, no, you gave me the information, who you needed to make the checkout to. So, or he'll set up, Ray will set up an account just for that purpose, to purchase the equipment. And Armstrong has, has offered to do the installation for us. It's all coming together, everything in place when the time starts back.
Let me, I had a call last week, and that's why this is, I'm asking these questions, but about high school students, and they, the fact that they did not have a textbook that they took home. Now, and that they were classroom sets, and I don't even recall what the class was. But anyway, they had classroom sets of textbooks that did not leave the room. But do you know whether or not, Rowdy, know whether or not the student has the, or are those available in an electronic form for them now?
Should be. I mean, I will, you know, our adoptions have all been.
Well, but I mean, that.
In electronic.
Okay, but that would require them to either have their own laptop or?
Or internet, I mean, you know, it's something, maybe they could access from a home.
So if I'm at home or not have internet service, I can access that and obtain that textbook that way?
They could.
But what you're, what we're hopeful for, what you're saying here is that from grades three to twelve, that hopefully we'll be able to provide a laptop for every student and that would be.
Loaded on the machine.
Loaded on to their computers.
And you and I talked about last week. Just so the Lincoln County has a plan, using our, our guys to, to prepare those laptops.
So we definitely go the, the need for a student to have a textbook that they take home, with the exception of those that didn't have internet availability?
Well, even those that don't have internet availability, when they're handed the laptop, the laptop will have a copy of the textbook.
So they can still.
Download it on the laptop. They don't have to have internet access to access the textbook.
Now they would have, if you're talking about in the mall.
Yeah, so really, in the long run, you, you should save money on textbooks by purchases.
Yes.
You don't have to buy books.
Yeah.
And I don't have to carry your books home from school or anything, Carol.
Now, a question I have, this may just be based on my daughter's inability to access. But we ran into that issue once last year with that. She had homework assignment, and Daddy would help her. And I said, you can't do this without the text because it refers you to textbook to read these passages and for references. And she didn't have it. And she, we looked, we tried to find the text online, and it couldn't be, she just didn't know how to access it. Now, the problem for us was rectified because I told her the next day, I said, you go in, you tell your teacher you'd like to have a textbook. Find out what we have to do to get a textbook for you. I'll pay for it if we need to. She came home with a textbook for that class, which, I'm not going to talk about this, but we may or may not still have the house, now that I think about it. But I, it would be great if, if, as a parent, we sent something around when we sent out the packets of information at the beginning of the year, telling the parents how to reference or access all of these different resources that are available online. I know most everything's done through their, whatever their school program is. With, you know, two this year still, well, one's graduated now, but.
You know, during open house would be a great time.
Yeah, we need pay, that's all, so Jeff, we need paperwork. I need something that says, type this in and hit enter, and you can find the textbook. Have your child enter their account number, their password, and then they can access the textbooks from here. Which, it's all academic, if everyone is, has their own machine next year, it won't matter.
As long as they're, they're aware of that, because then you won't get calls like I got. Well, that, you know, your child really doesn't need that textbook because they have it on their laptop.
Yeah, that would be your short answer when you get that call next year, and that's their, their grade three are up, right?
Right.
Because, you know, I can.
Grades three.
Because I, you know, this person was talking to me, you know, that they were, you know, we're not, we haven't been to school for two months. And we want, you know, she wanted to do this, but she doesn't have a book. And they, you can't take a book out of the room, so I'm like, oh, I don't understand that. I think I thought I could get about something. But all that will be resolved as long as everybody knows, you know, that they went to school a long time ago and they had a book, and now you don't have a book.
You have one, you just hit it in there.
Yeah, just you get it in a different way.
Well, the calls, people who talk to me about this package stuff is, if the kid has a question about something, there's no one who can get ahold of them through the truck.
Well, in theory, they should be able to send a question to their teacher. I want school assenger, what's it called? What program calls may help me here. And the teacher should respond within twenty-four hours, tw- really, twelve hours, in theory, Fred.
You just let the people know.
Well, I know one person sent an email, sent an email to a teacher and didn't hear it back for three days. Now, that's not acceptable. So we need to make sure next year that we get some of these issues treated that.
Hopefully, we're back in. Time will tell.
Time will tell.
But you know one thing, you're not going to be able to use excuse like you, you dog ate your homework?
No.
Stole your book or whatever.
That's really going to mess things up.
Yeah. I guess they could mess up your computer maybe, I don't know.
Computer virus, I don't know.
It's always been like computers.
Last night, yeah. Okay, anything else, Mr. Mickel?
Uh, just one more item. We, as you know, we've been on a modified work schedule here the last eight weeks. Beginning June the fourth, we will be back on a regular schedule.
Board office?
The board office will be back on a regular schedule. Anyone that's a two-hundred-and-forty-day employee. And as I've mentioned before, you know, we've got a number of staff members right now with several non-annual days, N A days to take. So even though we're back to a regular work schedule here, we still will have people who are taking those days.
Beginning in July, that should be more.
July first, we'll be back to the normal schedule.
What about Gine Valley principal applications?
I don't have an update.
Okay.
What I shared with you last week was the last update I had.
Okay, but it came down, it came down yesterday, or came down, comes down this evening?
Yes, today.
Okay, I'll check with you tomorrow.
Okay.
And then the assistant secretary of position will be posted.
Friday.
Friday, Jeff. And that will be posted for two weeks. And Mr. Kelly will have to get together to see, you know, how, how he wants to receive those applications. Okay, anything else from you, one? Okay, if not, this is adjourned then until June the second, two thousand twenty, at six P M. Here in Hamlin, have a motion?
So move.
Rowdy? Larry? Oh, yes?
Yeah.
Ben, Ben here, from long, I thought y'all wanted to stay.
Why?